Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Beard.
Here.
Kidd.
Yes.
Osby.
Yes.
Dressler.
Yes.
Bosboom.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll ask for an excused absence for Bob Rath. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion for Bob's excused absence.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Any conflict of interest for the items that are on the agenda? None, will move forward. Correspondence?
None.
Okay. Like to welcome all those in attendance and also the project manager Kathy Roche. She'll be giving a presentation tonight. Welcome Kathy, and we look forward to that. As to a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that your cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by the Municipal Code, Section 2-18. Amendments to California Government Code, Section 5495, excuse me, correction, 54950, prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Okay, a PowerPoint presentation by projects manager Kathy Roche, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly Kathy, regarding the capital improvements, CIP, project list and status.
Madam Chair, as a, just a word of introduction, we are so pleased and proud to have Kathy working for us. She comes to us from the city of Lake Havasu City.
Yes.
And where she was recently, but she spent fifteen years or so in Montana as capital projects constructor manager. And then prior to that, about the same length of time, back at Lake Havasu City. So she's estimated hundreds of millions of dollars of construction projects that she, capital construction, infrastructure projects that she's managed. So what we have done is Rainey conceived all these projects, got the funding, and now they're being handed off to Kathy to construct, while Rainey goes back and develops the grants for the next tranche of those projects. So we want to keep it going, and we're so proud of her. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Daniels, and good evening Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Again, I'm Kathy Roche, Projects Manager now for City of Needles. Before you tonight is the fiscal year 23 capital improvements update. I'll be touching on approximately seventeen projects, so I'll be brief, and I'll give you an opportunity to ask questions at the end. I'd like to start the presentation with the fun projects, which to me would be the city park improvements. As you, as Mr. Daniels just said, staff has been very active in applying for grant funding for parks, planning and development, as well as other, many other infrastructure projects that you'll see in the presentation. But before you hear, the city has approximately $6,365,000 in park projects for fiscal year 23. Those will include improvements for the Duke Watkins Park. We'll go into that on the next slide. Also, the First Beach Marina Beach Park, approximately 2.1 million. And the Jack Smith Bike and Walking Path is also included at approximately $200,000. So the first park I'd like to talk to you about tonight is, I lost my place here, is the Duke Watkins Park Improvements. It's a hundred percent grant funded. The design was awarded to TKE Construction, I mean, I'm sorry, TKE, TKE Engineering, who is actively designing the park right now. Under the grant requirements, the park improvements will include the ball field upgrades, lighting and shade structures are included with that, a basketball court resurface, a new water splash pad for the children, new restroom facilities, a small dog park, which will be adjacent to the large dark dog park, and the BMX pump track, which is going to be a very large feature in this park for the BMX riders, and new playground equipment, which some of that has already been purchased. Secondly, under the Clean California Local Grant Program, the city was awarded a grant for approximately 2.2 million for the First Beach Marina Beach, Marina Beach Park Project. I'm getting used to these names. The project is located near the Needles Marina and across from what you guys may know as the Nineteenth Hole Restaurant. The project is in the beginning stages of design and is scoped to have the following improvements. A grassy knoll area, which you can see on the concept plan, new restroom facilities, a parking lot expansion, new walkways throughout this area, a new ramp and stairs to get down to the beach, solar lighting, and of course, some picnic tables, benches, and additional waste receptacles. Next is the Jack Smith Park Bike and Walking Trail. You may have seen this before. It has previously been designed and has gone out to bid. Bids came in higher than the original budget of 200,000, about 25% higher, I believe. And therefore, we're going to rebid this project in the future with the other two park projects that you just saw. This project is partially funded by a CalRecycle grant, also with funds from the California Department of Parks and Recreation as part of their SB 68 per capita program. Those improvements, again, total approximately 200,000. It includes a 1,600-foot linear foot walking trail, walking or biking trail, it's about eight foot wide. That will be surfaced with a rubberized asphalt material. The concept plan includes some exercise stations, again, some additional benches, bike racks, and playground equipment. Again, what we plan to do is take those three projects together out to bid. Maybe as one project, maybe as three projects simultaneously to entice bidders to bid on all three and hope for some very competitive bids. Next is our much-needed water improvements for City of Needles that are listed here. They are grant-funded through the California State Water Resources Control Board as part of the Clean Water Drinking Act or program. And there are several projects, can you go back to that slide? Thank you. So talk to the water projects. So recently, you may know that the city was awarded Amendment Number Two to that grant in the amount of approximately $14 million for the list of projects that are shown here. This is what the amendment did include. The Lily Hill Booster Station Replacement Project, an L Street Pump Station Replacement Project, a water line and manifold replacement project, and you can see the dollar amounts listed there. Well Number 11 Treatment Facility, and that includes a backup generator, a well 15 backup generator, and a well 11 to well 15 water line inner tie, and that's a transmit, transmission main that will connect those two facilities. And you see those dollar amounts, they don't exactly add up to the 14 million. The 14 million includes some administrative costs, some contingency money, but overall, the projects will come in, in that budget area. Next slide is, so I'm just going to briefly run through those projects and tell you a little bit more about them, show you a couple pictures. First is the Lily, the Lily Hill Booster Station. It's located at Lily Hill and Clary Streets, and there's kind of a picture of it at the top of the screen, shows what it looks like now. The bottom picture shows, that's a concept of what it's going to look like. We're actually recently picked colors for it. It's going to be lighter in color than that, more of a tan and a brown brick facade there. So just imagine that a little bit lighter. This project, as well as the L Street Booster Station, they're currently under contract. We have a contractor on board. They're in the process of submitting materials, some metals, equipment, some metals. I think we're on number eighty or eighty-one now of the some metals that are being approved. So we're going through the motions, trying to get all of those out the door, which most of them are, and get all of their equipment ordered. They're planning on mobilizing here pretty soon. Originally, they want to mobilize in October, but hopefully we'll see them out, out, out on the site in November at the latest. This project includes the construction of the new pump station next to, next to the existing one. So this one will stay in place while they, while they build the new one. This one will be demoed. The new pump house will be built. And as part of this, you know, there's many lines that come in right now off of Lily Hill. They'll be coming in off of Clary, so some of those lines will be abandoned. And of course, there's, you can see the slope, there's going to be some grading, retaining walls, fencing, that's included as well. So the L Street Project is similar. It's a smaller station. It's currently under contract, same contractor. Cora Constructors, Constructors did receive the, they were the low bidder. Again, we're in the cemental process. They plan on mobilizing a little after Lily Hill gets started. So, you know, they, they're going to mobilize to Lily Hill first and then jump back and start at L Street. So this little shack, I call it, is going to be demolished, and they're going to build a, a structure that's similar, it'll be smaller, but similar to the one over at Lily Hill. And as part of that, they'll be installing, of course, a new, more efficient pump. The next project that I'm working on right now, actively working on, is this well Number 11 Treatment Facility and Backup Generator. As you see, it's a large dollar amount, 5.7 million. Due to the emergency declaration, we're, we're going to go out with a design build contract on this. We're working on that contract now. We're waiting for a detailed proposal, which is going to be coming in, and we'll be taking that to council soon. The scope of this is to construct a new treatment plant at the well Number 11 site. And oops, the main purpose is to, is for the removal of the iron and manganese. The, the plant, my understanding, that's there now, wasn't capable of doing that, and that was mandated. So this new treatment facility will be built. Included in that is the backup generator for well 11. And one thing to note, that, that this well, you know, has the capacity of producing 2,500 gallons per minute, can serve most of the city, so it's a very important facility for the city. And as part of this project, they'll be, they'll be demoing portions of that existing plants. There are some components that may, may be kept, but we'll find out that more during the design. The next project is the manifold water line and manifold replacements. The manifold is located down the existing public works yard. That's where many water lines are coming in, are actually going out, and distribution lines, and that manifold will be demolished and be replaced with a new manifold. There's some water lines that we, that they added to this project. They're just partial segments. One on River Road, one on Monterey Avenue. So that's just kind of packaged in that project. So this one here, the design is complete. It's ready to go to bid. We just haven't advertised this project until the treatment plant and the inner tie line is further along. So it's ready to go, and you'll see it here in a couple months. Another project to mention is the inner tie. So the inner tie line is a, it's a transit, transmission main that goes from well 11 to well 15 along River Road there. So we just, I'm working on the, the design proposal came in, working on taking that to council. It's approximately 2,855 linear feet of, again, transmission main that runs kind of off the shoulder River Road. It's going to connect those two facilities, bring water to the treatment plant. Basically, yes, it's a, it's a line for the untreated water to take it to the treatment plant before entering the, again, before entering the facility. So that is a very needed portion before we, again, demolish that manifold and build a new one. Those are the water improvements, the 14 million. Going to move on now to street improvement projects. I didn't total these up because these are, there's a couple of them that are city, or city street projects, and then I'm going to move into some projects. They're city projects, but they're being built by outside agencies. So I'll start with the city projects. We have the Phase Three Water Service Replacement and Street Improvement Projects currently under construction. Those guys are out working. They've, they have grinded the asphalt. That's been completed. They are now replacing water services. And once those are complete, they'll come back and pave the streets that are on that program. We'll, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Working on next, a proposal on the design for the next phase of those water service and street improvements. So that proposal has come in, kind of refining that right now, and that design will go to, that proposal will go to council here, hopefully in the next couple weeks. The Needle Highways Project Segment 1B. You may be a little bit familiar with that. The county is building that project. It currently is under construction or just the very start of construction. And that segment runs from 500 feet south of Park Road to David Road. And that project's about 2.1 million. Next project on this list is the Colorado River Bridge Deck Project, which is a joint project, City ADOT. And ADOT has taken the lead on that, and we'll talk more about that here in a little bit. The city's portion of the, is 50% of this 3.8 million you see here. And they also have funding from Caltrans to, partial, or about 88% of that will be reimbursed from Caltrans. And then there's the Obernolte Water Service Replacement Program, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. Those are some additional street improvements and water line replacements. Got to my notes here. Okay, so here's just a couple pictures of our Phase Three Water Service Replacement Project. You can see it's a $1.8 million project. There's some of the, the millings, the grinding that took place. Here's a new water service going in. Again, it's, it's consists of the grinding of existing pavement, replacing all these water services. There's approximately about 165 in this program. And then they'll jump back and overlay these streets with new asphalt. And if everything stays on schedule, you know, they should be done this fall. Here's a list of the streets, and there's a map with that kind of blue cyan color there that shows where they're working right now. D Street, C Street, B Street, A Street, Elmway, Coma, Bezuth, the Boo Booth. Everybody knows the history of that name, but I don't remember it right now. The next project, again, where we're going to, this is a list of streets that we're looking at as part of the Phase Four. Of course, we're following the city's pavement management program that was adopted, I believe, in 2019. You know, the city recognized that the streets needed to be repaved with the cannabis money that's coming in. They wanted to develop a comprehensive program, and we're following that. So this, these streets that you see are, are listed in that program, and we're following that. We may consider some other paving, but we're, we're, we're looking at that now. There's the, the Park Road at Duke Watkins Park that may need to be included, and a couple other areas that have been identified, so that this could be modified just a bit. And I need to put some numbers to this. I think we have about 2.5 million to consider. So we're, we're working on refining this and getting this, getting a proposal to take to council for design. The Needle Highway Segment 1B Project, again, we talked about that. This is being built by San Bernardino County. They've, they've notified us that they're starting construction, so you'll see, this one's federally funded through SBTCA. Again, it's a pavement reconstruction project. There's some minor drainage improvements included. And of course, at the end, there'll be some pavement striping, and they're starting now. They anticipate to be finished in November. The project runs through December. You may see some, you know, public information out that says December, but the contractor schedule and the county are hoping to, to finish by the end of November. And I apologize. The one, there'll be a 1C project that will be next. I don't think I have a slide on that. But again, that will follow probably next fiscal year. Talked a little bit about the Colorado River Bridge Deck Project. It's a joint ADOT City of Needles project. It consists of the replacement of the concrete bridge deck, replacement of the bridge bearings that are damaged or just need to be replaced due to the wear. That's going to be kind of the first order of the project. And, and, you know, these items were identified in the, the standard bridge inspections that ADOT does, so it's an important project that needs to be done. As part of this, one thing that I mentioned on here is the one-way traffic control. So this project is starting in October, but the first phase of the project is going to be that, that the bearings are going to be working underneath the bridge, so there'll still be two-way traffic over the bridge. The second phase is where they're going to implement the traffic control one way over the bridge, which means they're going to, they're going to stop traffic one direction, allow traffic to go through, and then vice versa. And they're, right now, they are going to try, or try, but they plan to do that with a temporary signal and preemption. So it will be a preempted signal, so if one way has no one sitting there, it'll allow the other direction to go. They also included in the bid some traffic safety support. So if, you know, if the signal is not efficient, then they'll actually bring out some manpower, and that's being supplied, I believe, by the Highway Patrol, California Highway Patrol and, and, and other agencies. The Railroad Underpass Project, this has been kind of an ongoing issue. Some of you may know about it. You know, this, this is a one-way underpass right now at K Street, and there's been several accidents of vehicles hitting the support area here. And so the railroad wanted to close this, but it's very important to City of Needles to keep it open. And so that, so this project's been proposed. It's been approved. We're working with the railroad to get the final agreement signed. And that will, what it includes is the fabrication and installation of two overhead steel structure. It's actually going to set out from the bridge. It won't be near this area. It's going to set out. So if a vehicle approaches that area and doesn't meet the height requirement, you know, it will hit the structure and not hit the bridge. So this project's 100% design. It went out to bid. There's a contractor on board. He's local. We're just waiting right now, you know, for the BNSF to approve the agreements. And I know Patrick's been working very hard to, to finalize that, and I'm going to start working on them as well. The Obernolte Project, this is a shelf-ready project that's been brought forward by Senator Obernolte, I guess, several years ago. It's been funded through the FHWA earmarked funds in the, in part of the infrastructure bill. And it's another waters, it's another, oh, I have a misspelling there. It's another street milling, water line replacement and repaving of these streets, which are all in the school area. This project is, is a Caltrans project throughout the Needles area. It's a very exciting project. It's the monument signage and freeway ramp cleanup, more of a beautification project. I had a meeting with Caltrans today. They're very excited about it. They have a contractor now on board. They're just starting the beginning stages of construction, which includes, you know, the erosion control. So it's, it's going to be towards the end of November, where you might see them, the contractor mobilize, or even in December. It includes this monument. This bottom picture kind of shows you the bear there, the California bear, and the, of course, the lettering of California. It's, it's a wall with the lettering, and then this bear sits up on the wall. This bear is approximately 10 feet tall. The wall is about eight feet, so this, it's going to be about 18 feet tall. This project also includes beautification of the on and off ramps. And those off ramps are at the Needles Highway, they're at J Street, and at Broadway. So they're going to do landscaping, mostly hardscape. You're going to see some cobble, probably some crushed granite. I, I don't have all of those features on here. I haven't seen all of those plans yet. But, but that is a part of this project. And I did talk to him about that being underway at the same time as the ADOT Bridge to make sure we don't have any traffic control issues. Another project that has some funding available. This project at the golf course is a much-needed project. The irrigation system is very old. It's very ancient. This is a picture of one of the sprinkler heads that gets put out every night, actually walked out onto the golf course by a grounds person that waters the, the grass. The city has received funds from the Urban and Multi-Benefit Drought Relief Grant Program, which is from the California Department of Water Resources. It's not enough to do the entire project, so we're calling this Phase One. It's approximately $715,000. It'll include the replacement of 660 sprinkler heads, so we can get rid of these. They're going to buy some new, the pop-up style heads. They're going to design the entire system, so that's a big part of this, this project. They're first going to design an automatic sprinkler system. They're going to analyze it, design it, and then purchase the 660 heads and use the more efficient heads until more funds become available. And that includes preparing the bid documents, so when we go out to bid for, for these, that will be taken care of as part of this design contract. So this design is just starting. Won't take too long, take a couple months, and then we'll be going out to bid. Very important project to the city, the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Smart Meter Program. Rainey's been working really hard on this. It, it's, has federal, several funding sources, some from the, the Water Smart Grant from the Bureau of Reclamation. There's also from the Coronavirus Fund. There's also from the Coronavirus Funds, approximately 600,000. And the remaining funds will come from the Water Asset Replacement Fund and then the Electric Asset Replacement Fund. But basically what it is, it's an entire network of smart meters. So they're going to replace all of the existing electric meters that need to be read manually by a meter reader and replace them with these new smart meters. So both, this is both electric and water. So the, the network infrastructure is complete. The, a consultant is on board, has been on board, working on this plan. They completed, I don't know if I could hit escape there, something came up. They, they've completed the installation of these networks, routers that make, that, that sends all the information back to the program. That's going to download the data for the meter reading. They're going to start with, they put out five test meters that they're going to test this week and part of next week. And if all goes well with that, they're going to start deploying. They have four or five guys that are going to start installing all of the electric meters. So that, hoping to start around October 17. The water meters are, are in back order. They're waiting for those. They, right now, they're showing that they may come in in January. If that's the case, then they'll deploy those to be installed starting in February. And that's all I have for today. Any questions?
Madam Chair, Barbara Beard, have a question?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
On the last slide, you said, it said, receive the meters on January 23, and you said the first deployment is October. And then the water meter deployment is in February. I'm confused.
There's two components to this project. There's the electric meters and then there's the water meters.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, the electric, yeah, no, that, that's a good question because the electric meters are here. They've been in, they've, they arrived, I believe, you know, a couple of months ago. So they were just waiting for the network infrastructure to be completed and that is now complete. So they're ready to deploy. It's, but it's
So it's the water we're waiting for.
It's the water we're waiting for. So, so they're going to start the electric meters and hopefully, you know, they'll be getting data here in, in just a short time.
My dog will be there to welcome them.
I have a question. Rick, I thought we had had some of these smart meters already being, or were they just testing the old meters? I can't remember where that was left off.
Well, we had, early on, we had problems with primarily commercial meters. So we did replace a lot of commercial meters because that's where the bulk of the energy goes. But we've, we're actually putting out two, three, four, five pilot electric meters, I think, beginning tomorrow. But yeah.
Those are the smart meters then?
Those are the smart meters. Plus they, I mean, they're, what, what, what you'll be able to do is off electricity and/or water, you'll be able to go onto your mobile phone and you can read your meter in real time right now.
Dollar signs.
Dollar and volume. And you can also compare that to last month. You can compare that same month last year. So it is a richer database. But also, you'll be able to, the electric meters have fraud prevention because we've had people try and shovel paper flippers and stuff. So it'll detect that. And on the water meters, it has a leak detection system. Because we have experienced where somebody may be gone for the summer and they come back and they've used Uber's amounts of, of water that they didn't know about. And, but this will now have a leak detection system that will inform us. And I believe it operates off of sound of a leak.
Madam Chair, if I might add a, a comment to what Rick just said about the leak detection. I can personally attest to that experience. I'm frequently out of town for extended periods for work. And a couple of years, about a year and a half ago, I returned just before Christmas Eve and I had a leak in my home that did $30,000 worth of damage. So this feature would have been very helpful for me. Now, is this something, Rick, that you can access anywhere? Like
It's a mobile, mobile app.
Your mobile phone.
That'd be great because
Be able to dial into your, your account page in our financial management.
So I could have checked that in another state. Oh gee, I got a problem, I better call.
We can set alarms. We can, like, if, if your normal is
Two gallons a month.
Two gallons, right. And all of a sudden, halfway through the month, you're four. You can set an alarm to, to notify you. It's like a overdue, overdue, overuse. Yeah, overuse or, you know, a bad check, you know, your, your balance has gotten too low. So there's a, you know, it's like my mobile phone, it does more things than that.
Yeah, that sounds really good.
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
During the heat, when everybody's using a lot of air and the governor says, hey, we, we want to cut back on electric. Can they electronically shut those meters down? Or control them in any way?
There, there is a variation of this and you have to sign up for it. But Edison, PG&E and some of the bigger utilities have this. But you sign up for, basically, they control your meter. So they will conduct rolling blackouts by shutting off people's meters and the flow of, of energy. These are not anywhere in that family. No.
I did have a couple, just so you know, Madam Chair, I did have a couple more questions. I wasn't done, but we're continuing with the same subject, so I'm keeping my mouth shut.
Okay, Charles, were you finished with your question?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
The Lily Hill Power Station that's going to be revoked? As I recall, discussions forever ago, it was going to be set way back across, behind the other one and that would also afford us better traffic view of oncoming, going uphill, uphill on Lily Hill when you're on Clary.
That is, that is correct. Yes, it is going to be set back and they are going to do some regrading. They're going to build a retaining wall, which will allow the site distance to be
The retaining wall will not impair what view we do have now?
No, it will not.
I was waiting for an accident to happen here. And then I think just one more. So someplace along the line, we decided to do the treatment plant. I don't remember hearing about that until, since we discussed, the neat poss, oh, City Council discussed the, the possible need for it. And on your, one of your slides, you had, because I was kind of about that, on removal of iron and manganese
Right.
in the treatment. Now, that was, okay, I should have, go ahead. No, I'm done.
Oh, Madam Chair, the, as you might recall, in 2019, the state, as the only state in the country, adopted health standards for iron and manganese, both of which you can get vitamin supplements of such in the health food store. The state, in all their wisdom, decided to adopt standards and naturally occurring iron and manganese in Colorado River are above that standard. Now, they're not alleging that it's cancer-causing or whatever. The best we can figure out is that repeated overspray onto white stucco will cause it to get a little bit of a tan tint. That's about it.
It happens everywhere.
Right, yeah. So in the, the effect of adopting those standards is three of our wells, and we use about 2,500 gallons a minute. Three of our 2,500 gallon per minute wells were disqualified from use. So that left us with the one well. And you know, we had the lightning strike, which took that and we were hanging by a thread. So we looked at, the initial grant we got was for, to do a new well. We went through all the hydrogeologic analysis, identified where it should go and it was going to be out in North Needles. And we found more water than was projected, but it had iron and manganese in it. So what we decided to do was to, and we could have just put a small treatment plant at that well and made it look what we decided to do was to go down in the main well field there along the golf course and put a more significant water treatment plant to remove iron and manganese. And from that, we can run all three, or those, those two non-operable wells that don't meet standards through that treatment plant. And all of a sudden, we're back having three wells that meet main manganese and iron. So we have triple redundancy in the event of a well collapse or lightning strike or whatever. So, and the state agreed to fund 100% of that.
But we put chemicals into the water to treat it, right?
You know, you just want to love my favorite. I will get treatment protocol.
Where, where is the, you have well number 11 treatment facility and backup generator? Where is well 11?
Well 11 is, if you were to take Marina Drive, which goes on over to Rio Blaina Vista, if you were to come straight out and go across the golf course, it's right there.
Okay.
And
The one that's on the road to the British estate and the park.
Yeah, right, yeah. It's there, 15 is by the bridge, 12 is on the golf.
There's no water at all there now, right?
There, there's plenty of water there, but we can't use it because it doesn't meet iron and manganese.
Has to be treated, yeah.
Thank you very much. I have nothing further.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a question.
Kathy, yeah, go ahead.
I've got a question. Actually, this one's probably for Patrick. Since, since BNSF is so, it doesn't want the underpass opened. And, and I know you've been knocking on their door for months now. Is it realistic to think that they're going to really give us a permit to open that if they really don't want it open?
Well, that, the fact that they don't want it open isn't true. So they haven't told us anything against what we've already been searching for. So to answer your question, no, they're not trying to inhibit us. Yes, though I think they're going to let us open, I do.
You do?
We're, what happened was, gentleman that was working with us and was receiving my weekly emails stepped away. So he's no longer with BNSF. So I reached out to the Arizona Projects Manager and he said, oh yeah, he left. And so what we did was, we started reaching out two weeks ago. Kathy is now, I passed it over to Kathy, so Kathy will be reaching out as well. But basically, it's in the attorney's hands and our love for attorneys
Oh, yeah.
are, are great. But they're taking their
I know what to do with them.
But we're, I mean, we're doing weekly emails.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, I don't, it will open. We've done everything they've asked us to do. We're going to get this in front of council. We're going to purchase the land and we're going to get it done.
Oh, but that was the other question. I thought I had read something about, we thought about leasing the property.
No, yeah, we're being required, so we have to build this structure. 15, 25 feet out.
Right.
It has to be a standalone structure.
Right.
Well, it's in there right away. So they are requiring us, in the right way, to lease the two places where
Nine square feet.
pillars
Okay.
or barriers. And they are five foot by five.
Isn't it?
I'll carry a picket.
Okay. I was under the impression that they were kind of adamant about not, not letting us do anything.
They, they, but at the same time, we have identified for Rainey to work on a, a grant that would reconstruct that underpass as a real double-wide 15-foot
In spite of the BNSF?
Well, but if, if it's all paid for by, all they care about is the bridge not get jostled. Because that sends out electronic signals to the incoming cranes that
Well, having to lease the land also is a liability as these motorhomes and whatever else smash into them anyway, okay? The city will get sued. Of course, the railroad would too, but they're exempt, so.
Well, I question on that is then are we ta, I know it's a complicated situation, but I think, you know, we kind of need to be aware. Are we taking on something that's going to be just, you know, a lot of money and oversight, like the bridge going into Arizona? I mean, to go into something with the railroad is kind of a deep pit. So I, I would enter that pretty cautiously, I think.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, the alternative is to leave it closed and even though it's one-way, it's a critical link to K Street, which is exit. And you can see it when the traffic backs up so bad on Needles Highway coming into K Street. We need relief there. And we need it open as a second emergency access for those riverfront communities down along birdie shores and Colorado shores and the like. Right now, they only have one way out.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair, from Rick?
Sure, go ahead, Will.
Rick, do you think maybe the ultimate solution would be to do what you were saying and have a proper two-lane underpass with the 15 feet or whatever? So it basically eliminates that whole
Yes.
issue?
Yes, Madam Chair, Council of Boston, they, in about the year 2000, there was a study of a project called the I-40 J Street Project. And amongst the designs was to come off, on, off the freeway, onto J Street, go, go north, and then there was a big bridge that would have then dropped you down onto K Street. Which is what should have happened. But funding, I, I don't know. So we ended up with the surface street alternative. But now we're dealing with what's the next best alternative. I, I think it is to, even though it's quaint and part of the culture and character of the community, it is the low point in the community, so it accumulates all the stormwater drainage. Second of all, there is more and more traffic happening there as Mojave Valley grows, as we grow, as truck traffic grows, and it, it, it is not a sustainable situation the way it is now. But, but it, these projects take 20 years before they ever materialize.
But with the growth too, from, from Fort Mojave and Bullhead coming that direction, maybe the, the street, you know, going over the bridge and some of those areas are going to have to be widened or be more conducive, more traffic.
I think they will.
Yeah. Okay.
You could make J Street and K Street connect better through a real underpass. I think is the ultimate solution at this point.
He was representing the railroad.
But this has been, this has been two and a half years to get to this point.
Yeah.
Except for one day that I opened, right, for the motorcycle.
Okay, any other questions? For Kathy, or Kathy's still there, I guess, but, a very nice presentation, Kathy, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have someone from the audience that would like to ask her a question?
Sure, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
How long will that bridge be closed to save the lane for having a faculty? It's about sometime now to the bridge from the, from.
Yeah, and, and we recently had a meeting with ADOT and, um, all of the, uh, players that are involved. And, and I did voice our concern of that. Um, they are looking about four to five months. I, I'm hoping that gets reduced, but, um, they, you know, when I voiced my concerns, they, you know, brought up that they have this alternative traffic control measure where they'll actually bring law enforcement out, you know, to control it, so. That, that's what they're showing me in the schedule right now, yes. About the first of the year, probably through April. Um, I voiced my concern about busy weekends, um, but, but rejecting the bridge, it's a comprehensive project and, um, that's the only way they're gonna be able, able to do that, so. You're welcome. And, and we'll have meetings with them, so a, as the project progresses, we'll, we'll be conscious of the traffic control and, and I'm sure they will be too. They'll, they'll, they'll take whatever measures they need to, to ease it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from, uh, the public? If not, thank you, Kathy, for the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. Okay, we'll move on to the regular item, resolution number 10 dash 05 dash 2022. PC recommending an amendment to the Needles Municipal Code, amending chapter 12 licenses, adding 12 point, or 12 dash 56.1, mobile food vendors. Or, uh, go ahead.
Oh, the Chair and Commissioner, as you recall, uh, you saw this at our last meeting. There were some changes that you wanted to see before we took it to council, uh, and received your recommendation to City Council. So you've got an amended version in front of you that Dale had passed out. So basically, some of the changes, I'll just briefly go over them. Uh, we added some insurance requirements for folks that were, um, stated by our JPIA. We, uh, defined goods and merchandise that are able to be, uh, sold as part of the description to ensure that we were clear about that. We took, uh, so we, we step back, we've got, uh, Don Cavello, who's our city planner, who was just recently hired that worked on this, and we got David Christie with the MBI who also worked on this. And so we were able to, so, um, Don actually comes from us from Bullhead, and they just passed their ordinance. And so we were able to take some of the good things. And this, uh, on page two, you're seeing the, the must have at least, uh, one hand sanitizer on site. That's one of them, you know, 30 gallon trash receptible to making sure that these folks are, um, taking care of their own trash. Um, page four, like I mentioned, we added, uh, insurance requirements. One of the, the best ones that we found was recommendation from Judy, actually, was the, um, the special event permit. So we actually dived into that really well and added a section of special events into our ordinance. And we actually were able to exercise some of this over the last weekend. And, um, basically, it takes them through a process where there's a special event permit. It's a, uh, it's either a, uh, it can be a day long, if it's a, say it's a, uh, food, uh, monthly event or two months in a row, we count that as one event. So the food, so take the rodeo, for instance, they'd go to the county, they'd apply for this permit from the county, either Arizona or wherever, Nevada, wherever, you go get your permit from the county. It's a real simple process. It's a, the event organizer will also get a permit from the county. And basically, it says that, you know, the, these are our food trucks, they are coming to our event, our event does exist. And so basically, they will go to the county, get this permit, pay the fee, it's all done online. Uh, the day of the event, the county comes out and does a tour of your, uh, of these food trucks. Uh, but again, there, there, it's very hassle-free. The special event permit is actually very accommodating. You can get a one-time permit, or you can get an annual permit based on the type of event. But as I had mentioned, um, so that's why you're seeing the two-day, uh, event scratched out. Because basically, it could be a farmer's market, so you've got one event organizer doing it, you know, April, um, through August. That would be one event because it's the same event organizer. And so, anyway, so we found a opportunity there to, to put that in. And at the end of the day, they'll get a business license, and then they get the business license if you show us that you've got your receipt from, you know, applying to the county. There is a two-week, um, two-week period where you wanna submit it, they'll get back to you. But they were very accommodating. We had a call with the county on, I think it was Tuesday. We let them know about the event on Saturday, and they were able to, um, they were able to accommodate our folks. So the county just wants compliance. They just wanna see that people are trying, and so that was very exciting to see that. On page five, we added some length with about packaging in the area where you're supposed to be. That you have to have a sidewalk, you want to do your operations, so in areas that don't have sidewalks, it won't apply. And then finally, the state has passed several ordinance or state laws that protect sidewalk vendors and, and whatnot. So we will, uh, we will amend our code as we go or just near the state. But basically, sidewalk vending can incur on any sidewalk per state regulations, uh, public or private or in terms of commercial. Sidewalk vendors aren't regulated, but a commercial food truck is, we've got those limited to our commercial areas and parks. And basically, we had to tune down the violations because by making it a misdemeanor violated state law, so we had to tune down our misdemeanor language that we had in there. But at the end of the day, we've got a very good product that we have in front of you. Uh, we worked very hard on, on David, uh, the county and myself, um, were able to pitch you a product that I think stands pretty well. Now that concludes my presentation, right? You have any questions? Uh, David, Don, we'll come to that. Let's turn, so we take these one by one if you've got any.
Any questions from the commission? So Patrick, the county would actually come out and check each event to make sure they're licensed and?
That, and sure, so yes, so actually, in the permit fee, they will drive out here to ensure that, I mean, that's what they told us, whether they're gonna do it or not, um, it's up to them. But I believe that they had stated, or they did state that they would come out to each event to ensure that these food truck vendors on the site did apply for a permit. Like I said, it's a very easy process. If they didn't apply for a permit, they won't shut them down. What they'll do is, is they'll just require them to pay for the fee at that point in time, just with the, with the league associating. Um, so it's not that they would just shut them down, they just wanna make sure that they're, they've got their permit. And so.
Okay, and this applies for anyone coming from the Arizona side also, then?
Yeah, anybody, you're welcome. We, uh, we had an event this last weekend where it was a private event. So they were able to bring them through our catering license. And so, uh, basically, there were, uh, two or three vendors from across Arizona. It's a very successful event. Uh, the vendors had no problem going through the process. Don, uh, and David were very accommodating to get them what they needed. We scrambled and, uh, were able to make sure that, um, these folks had their permit to be able to comply.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission to the staff?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess you recognize my voice, right?
Yes, I do.
Um, on the subject you were just speaking of, I had written down reciprocity just seconds ago. Um, so they were able to come over here from Arizona and then check in with the city. And you helped them through the process of permit, right? Permits, I should be directing my questions to David. Neither one of you are here in Needles, though, right?
The diamonds aren't here. We, we claim.
We claimed Don, Don, but, but you're not gonna, are you doing permits for these people? You are. Oh, okay. So a vendor showed.
David did the originals, but as far as for the food vendors and how they got to San Bernardino and the special event business license that went.
So I've got a truck, a whole bunch of taco stuff on it, okay? And I drive up to the city, and what do I need to do? Okay, so you walk them through the permit process, show me what you do have, your vending license or whatever you do have from Arizona, right? Did I catch that in the mix here?
They have to apply to San Bernardino.
Okay, but did you say something about what they do have already in Arizona that they show you?
Well, that's separate. That's a, so we're talking about special events that was requested. For the last conversation we had regarding actual food truck, uh, food truck vendors that are gonna be there from, you know, they're gonna go around the city and they're gonna accommodate the, you know, they're gonna go to a site and go to the park for a couple hours, and then they're gonna go some. So these are different types of.
Yeah, I was talking about special events just now.
Okay.
So, they, so they don't have, they're coming from Arizona for a special event. They have a truck, they got tacos on it, they're gonna wanna work for the special event. Maybe it's not starting today then, because they would wait until the day that's, that it's starting to do this. I mean, the cheese could, like, cheese, so, anyway. So, when they do get here, and they, they, do they have to come in person or can they call?
Well, first, the event organizer has to go ahead and apply.
Right.
And they'll say what food trucks they're gonna have.
Right.
Then, the food truck then applies to San Bernardino County. Um, as far as the special ben, business license for us through the city, then it's good for one week.
Okay, so they will have gone to the county first. They don't have to have anything from Arizona? No, no Department of Health or anything like that?
What San Bernardino is gonna.
Okay, that's off of us.
Right. As long as we know that they've submitted to San Bernardino, then we're, we're okay with it and we'll be okay with issuing the special event business license.
So it sounds like it, we happen pretty fast at the county when we just did this recently. They got it through, they didn't try and install us at the county level, so these guys couldn't work. Okay, so they went to the county or called the county, whatever they did, they got what they needed and they brought it to you. And then you issue the business license permit for a week.
They would get a business license, special event for one week. Because it could be two-day event, it could be a weekend event, what have you.
Okay, so the county, we don't have to, do we do any inspecting or anything? We don't do it. So the county.
Part of this. So if they, if they do in fact violate that, we will, uh, we will disperse code enforcement on them. But again, at the end of the day, it's compliance to ensure that these folks are playing by the rules and they have no reason not to. They're, they're good business, they're trying to start, uh, grand opening. Uh, we had one of them come in and say, what do you mean I need this? And they scrambled and tried to do it together on Friday, called Brick from a conference and said, hey, we gotta end this. And so he said, yes, we do, we gotta treat everybody the same, goes back. And so we treat everybody the same and we make sure everybody follows.
So did we go and check to see, we, that was one location thing? So to answer my question, do you, did you go and, because you only have.
The county will, the county comes down and will do the, uh, the check of the event. But we, uh, so the county comes down to ensure that everybody's following the permits. The people that are there that don't have a permit, they're gonna have to be issued a permit.
Okay, but my question, back to the beginning, is, are we also going to be checking to make sure that there aren't any trucks out there that haven't pulled permits? Are we gonna check the event?
Traditionally, uh, code enforcement does work on the weekend. And so, yeah, code enforcement, like this weekend, Don had asked Adrian, hey, can you please stop by the event to see what's going on, to see who's here? Or, I, sorry, I don't even, people, you know, our code enforcement officer requested to go and check out the events to ensure. And again, these don't happen all the time, right? They're only every couple months, and the grand openings only happen once, or maybe twice.
Okay, you got it. You answered my questions, thank you. Smooth transition, smooth process for these people.
Okay. Um, if there are no other questions to the staff, um, I guess I would open it to public hearing. Is there any public comment? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, any other questions for the, or discussion from the commission? If not, I'll ask for the improvement, uh, or an approval of the findings.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings. I'm taking it like you're gonna read, right?
Recommended action, approved resolution number 10 dash 05 dash 2022, PC, of many needles in this proposal. And then we chapter 12 licenses adding 12 dash 56.1 mobile food vendors.
That.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Were there nays? I'm sorry, Dale, I didn't, is, was it unanimous?
Unanimous, all ayes.
All right, thank you. So it passes. I think that's a really, uh, good asset for the city, for the, the city and, uh, special events, so it's a good thing. Okay, we'll move on to, uh.
Patrick.
Was that?
Yeah, they'll be, this will be presented to the council, uh, this, coming up Tuesday. So we're, we're doing a quick turnaround as we previously.
Yeah, very good, because it's the time of year now that they can actually be using it. Okay, I'll move forward to the board requests. Um, Mike?
Uh, I have none, thank you.
None? Barbara?
I have an issue, but I'm dealing with it with Patrick. And it crosses over into planning commission issues from personal issues. So I will not bring it up at this time, but he's nodding his head. So I do, I wanna make a record right now that I do have an issue with a cannabis location, but I'm not going to bring it to you right now, but I wanna mark that in time.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
Uh, none for me, thank you.
Charles?
Uh, nothing.
Will?
None for me.
Okay, and nothing for me. We'll move to, uh, the manager's report.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, just a couple, uh, free things. Uh, Patrick, uh, and Counselor Campbell just completed, uh, attending the International Conference of Shopping Centers. The, the initial state is same, but the words are different. But anyway, uh, on a business recruitment effort and, uh, they established a number of leads and with the strong focus on grocery. The second thing is, we've been working with, um, marketing the community for housing. We need housing. Um, and we make the argument that with 535 new cannabis labs, with 35 to 50 at the new Wyndham Hotel, with four businesses, new businesses that have opened up, each with a couple of employees, and others that are gonna happen, that we've got to get housing. that we've got to get housing because we don't have the housing. Whether it is rehabilitate existing housing or build new housing. So the second thing that we're adding to, or is that I've been working with Bing Lung at the hospital to put together a piece of our marketing that talks about the healthcare services that a hospital provides in a community. And for Charles and I, that's important, for younger folks. Uh, not so much, but depending upon
Lighter folks.
life, healthcare is is, is ways more in when you decide where to live. So we want to make sure that in our housing package, for the food that we have a good, strong, why healthcare is available, and what is available, and, uh, all those factors. The third was a surprise to me, and that was at the superintendent's retirement dinner the other night. Um, she pointed out, and we've all seen the article, that during COVID, student learning brought twenty to fifty percent. Depending upon the district LA, fifty percent. Uh, most were in that twenty to twenty-five percent of learning laws. And that is by not being in school, not being in social situations, that there was people not only didn't progress, they re, they regressed. In Needles, every single grade cohort increased their learning during COVID. And that is noteworthy because what I want to do is get from Dr. Mary, what does that, what does that mean? Because, for the younger family. And I don't mean to be sexist, and Bob, and please forgive me, pardon me. That mothers make decisions on where a family lives, what community. And his or her main criteria is the education following school. Well, here's a case, and I'm, I'm envisioning this full-page ad in the LA Times about LA Unified School District, your kids lost fifty percent of their learning capacity during COVID. Needles increased at every grade level. That and higher than thirty-five cent electric power, it's a twelve year, but, you know, but, but that, it just be, we need to layer on every argument we can think of to attract people to build homes and to choose Needles as a place to live rather than that megalopolis of Southern California where there's too many people, too many cars
Making noise.
air, too much noise, too, too much air pollution, when we know the secret.
Rick will then
It's just part of marketing.
Rick, will the new hotel offer any long-term stays?
No, they are, uh, their plans and their market studies were overnight and weekend and, you know, typical hotel. Uh, they don't see themselves as a, uh, I'm sure Howard Hughes wanted to do himself a lot wanted to rent top floor, but no, that's not gonna
Would that be something they could consider, like for some of the contractors or the workers?
Well, uh, I think when you get to the rates that they're gonna charge, that there are other options of them. We are trying to get some of the, um, hotels, uh, like, uh, The Sage, okay? Uh, the Imperial One Hundred over here. To get those there, we're talking with those people about converting those to single-room occupancy. Yeah. Um, because we're dying for help now. We talked to a party today that up on Clary Drive uh, on the south side of Cali Hernandez, there's four lots and that they are requiring about putting four new places. Which is perfect for us. And it's completely allowed in the same thing. So, uh, we're gonna hit one of these. And then I think, once we hit one, that it will open up break the scene. But anyway, that's just quick, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or you know.
Madam Chair, I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
Um, I thought right across, regardless on Clary, there was a developer that was already
We had, we had, uh, we owned a piece of property right in there, and, uh, he expressed interest, made an offer, we accepted it before it got into escrow, he wanted but that's, but that's still a thing. But this is, so it go up and go down of Clary and then Cali, and this it's four lots right there, then say the same.
On the corner, or way back? Like as you
No, no, it's right there on the corner.
Right on the corner, okay, because I know there was a separate area that was a smaller part, perfect.
They have all the utilities, this is ready to
They'll be ready before they're
Yeah, would be great.
Department buildings.
Okay, if no other questions, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.